Like to call the order, Woodland Park Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 8th. Please have a roll call.
Sure, so I don't forget you. We'll start with Chair Hertzfield.
Present.
Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Don DeZellum.
Present.
Jared Newcomb is absent. Ken Kennedy?
I'm here on Zoom.
Thank you. Larry Larson?
Here.
Don Hoyne?
Here.
And Cole Middleton?
Here.
And then also present is Mayor Pretend Nakai online and then yeah Catherine if I, yeah, that was a big one because Ken Kennedy already said something. It's been a very long day. Lou Ramon is in the audience from Board of Adjustment. That's who I was forgetting. My apologies. So I think that counts for everybody.
Thank you. Now please draw me a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
On tonight's agenda, we have a work session for the code review project. I think we're picking up where we left off last time.
Sure. Just a quick recap. We've been working for quite a while now, several years actually. Going through the code update, looking at primarily titles seventeen related to subdivision and eighteen related to zoning. And the project has largely been restructuring where we take all of our existing language and put it in a better format. We're logical locations, those kind of things. And through that, you all have done a much more detailed word by word review of everything that's been restructured. When we get to the administration sections, this chapter six, this is where we talk about how things get processed. This is the chapter that we are starting from scratch with essentially. Because some of you already know this, but I had CJ grind through the code. And in title seventeen subdivisions, there are twenty-three instances where process is buried throughout that particular chapter. And then in title eighteen, he identified twenty-six instances of where things are buried. And there's a lot of duplicated language through there. And there's a lot of commonality in terms of how we process an application and what that needs to look like. So this chapter six, we had a prior work session where the group provided consensus and guidance that you were comfortable with the direction that Jen Gardner with Logan Simpson, our consultant, and I wanted to go around consolidating all this information. Because for those things that are consistent and really giving this chapter, the wholesale update that is desperately needed in order to support not just staff processing applications, but more importantly, our community as a whole and the development community who wants to get things done in this community. So with that, tonight, we have the first part of chapter six that Jen and I were able to pull together for your more detailed review. And this is going to take a couple of work sessions, partly because we're leaving other current planning cases in between. And just because we're also writing this as it comes out to you. So it's very, very fresh. And I apologize, it feels a little segmented, but it will come together. And she and I are trying to be very strategic about giving you things in a logical order so that it's making sense that we're not. We had that conversation earlier this week to not skip around on you because that would probably make you guys a little crazy. So with that, I think we'll turn it over to Jen. And as usual, she's got her spreadsheet with comments we perceived. And then the document where those notes were embedded. And she, of course, is making notes from these meetings here that get added in to what the revisions ultimately look like. So with that, you ready Jen?
I am ready. All right. Thank you all for your review comments. And as you all know, from going through this on previous meetings, just we'll go kind of page by page and jump in if you haven't had a chance to make comments in Conveil and we'll keep the discussion moving. First off, and Karen, I don't know if you want to address this or if we want Larry to kind of reiterate his comment. But Larry, your comment number three at the top of this page kind of describes a little bit about kind of what Karen was just saying. Do you want to summarize that for the rest of the group or was that more just kind of you placing that in there for other folks to see?
Okay. Well, I'll try to summarize and not read the whole thing. Basically, what I recognized immediately that this this second chapter was different than the other chapters were reviewed. That other chapters reviewed were taking provisions out of the existing code, showing strikes out, additions, modifications. Where this one was completely different. It was a completely new write, a new chapter. So I just wanted to recognize that in my opening comments about it and say that it's very important because these will actually, through the procedure we're going to talk about, is going to be the rules that we expect people to follow. You expect the city to follow. And by knowing the rules following the procedure will make the process much easier to understand. So that's what I wanted to try to say in the first provision there. And it's so key to understand that it's to the, you know, how we implement the UDC.
Hey Larry, did you want that to actually be part of this chapter, like a little preamble?
These were just comments. Thanks, Tom. I did notice too, number two talks about two things. We've been referencing several of our changes and amendments dealing with the code. And we also talk about in this section about the municipal code. And I think it should be very clear whether we're talking about the UDC or the municipal code. So I think, I think we can solve that very quickly. And I've been thinking about this. And we talk about the municipal code as being the code. And then we talk about the Uniform Development Code as UDC, as we referenced and make it short. Maybe that would be a simple way to do that. I don't think that'd be something we need to.
What would you propose to do that? Just say this unified development code each place?
No, UDC. We'll identify the UDC.
Okay. Do you want to change line two of the first page of the today?
Yeah, basically that way it keeps it simple. It's clear which one is which. Yep. Because you'll see in a few minutes, if we talk about those sections, where we do talk about the municipal code. The way this is applied. So I wanted to bring that to our attention. I also thought it was very important to talk about that tonight, we're not talking about the procedure summary table nor the specific application procedures. Now there will be a lot of discussion about that when we get to that. But our review leading up to this workshop did not include those things. As far as comments, Jen, that's all I have.
Okay, great. Thanks, Larry. I did go back to, and I'm really glad you brought this up about the UDC versus the code. I looked back in our notes from the very first chapter, chapter one, that sets the foundation for this, that kind of establishes the title. And we had this code and something else in there, but we were titling it the UDC. So I think what we'll do is go back to that and say that it could be referenced as the UDC from chapter one. And then we'll make that change throughout the whole code. Because I think, I think that's a great distinction, calling it this code is fine. But then we have this conflict between this code and the municipal code. So I think that's a good change.
And add it to the definitions.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, in that we could do it in chapter one and in the definitions. That's a good point. And then it can be cross-referenced in a couple places. Okay. Um. All right. So then the next comment was, and this again, Don Hoyne actually pointed out that the BOA and PRAB sections have a lot of description. And you had asked kind of, is this the best or only place for that? And that is correct. The current municipal code does spell out some of the terms, some additional terms and membership and different protocols, I guess, for city council, planning commission, and a few others. The Board of Adjustment right now lives in chapter eighteen, which is part of this whole project. So that's one of the chapters that we're replacing. And then the Parks Recreation Advisory Board currently doesn't live, there's no terms or powers and duties that live anywhere in any of the code language right now. Karen, do you want to weigh in on that? Because I know we pulled some things, we pulled the BOA language over from the current title or title eighteen. But the Prab we've kind of built from their oh, what's the word I'm looking for? Help me, Karen.
Our understanding of their role relative planning and zoning and then subdivision review. So I'm going to build a little bit on what Jen was saying, that this Unified Development Code does interact and intertwine with the rest of the municipal ordinances. So there's no reason to duplicate language. When the power, like historic preservation is a great example, that everything that they are set out to do, I think they're in two point four four. So that's all clearly spelled out there. And what we're looking for here is just a reference that, yes, they have input and and things that they do around land use and development applications and such. But look over here for where everything is spelled out. So that way we don't end up with duplicative language. One gets updated, the other one doesn't at some point. You know, it's, they do work together. So you see that with, yeah, city council. Planning Commission is located in two point four of the current regulations. And then yeah, there's this other category of empowering the city council to appoint other boards and commissions. And so that's how Parks and Recreation Advisory Board came to be, is that they fall under that particular category. I've not done the digging, we've not had a chance to touch base with the Parks and Rec Director. But I imagine there's potentially a resolution or something that really sets out what they're established for and what their role is. So we're potentially looking back at that. We just got a little bit of homework to do on that. So that's why you see this the way it is. And then we dove into a little bit more around staff. Because, you know, now we're in our current reg, so to talk about like what the planning staff does, what is our duties and authorities? So yes, it's listed as planning director, but it really is planning director or designated, which is, which is the entire team. That these are, these are what we're responsible for. And then also the city engineer and their role as it pertains to zoning and subdivision developments and regulations, their review role. So that's what this section is meant to do, is to connect the dots with other sections of the code and then fill in the gaps where things were not spelled out previously. And then the Board of Adjustment language, we did pull over from the current regulations. I don't think we did much massaging to it at all.
It looked like you did.
Yeah, no, Jen and I had that conversation. And where we have not finished filling out Board of Adjustment, somebody here flagged it that their powers or authorities, you know, the variances or appeals, is because the language was in like a couple of different places and it was not greatly written. And we were running into a time deadline to get stuff out to you. So that's what I punted. So that's why it's not there yet.
Well, I have a question that then when you guys go forward with this, you'll also have a change to the municipal code to remove those sections that you pulled in here.
Yeah, what happens down the line when the actual ordinance that goes to city council will say repeal title seventeen and title eighteen in their entirety and then adopt in its place all of the following. And this is the following, this and the other six chapters we've looked at. So that's how that happens.
And I don't want to pull on the thread too hard, but I'm just thinking for usability, if I wanted to understand. Okay, I gotta do this, something with, you know, the Board of Adjustments say, and understand what they are and what they can do and what authority they have. I don't know that I would automatically run to the application procedures chapter. So it feels a little out of place to have like how the board is appointed and duties and authorities, I mean, other than as it refers to their involvement in the application process.
So what I think you're driving at, since I've got a bit of interest in Board of Adjustment, is what you're thinking is maybe there needs to be a standalone part that just addresses the Board of Adjustment that's not or someplace that's not just buried under the, under this section of the.
Yeah, it feels like if I were looking for it, this wouldn't be the first place I'd look.
Yeah.
Well, and some of that may be fixed with renaming the chapter, since it really, Jen and I have referred to it as the administration chapter. So, because that's what it is.
That would be a better name for it.
It is the administration that contains application procedures.
It would probably help as well when both city council or all city council, planning commission, Board of Adjustment, all got put into the definitions as they need to be. That at least help you find it. So it still means you had to go to Unified Development Code to figure out how the Board of Adjustment works, but most of what it does is that.
I'm sorry.
And there is some changes there too. It's this number definitions doesn't have planning commission, it has been called the commission. And it doesn't have city council, that's something called the city.
Yeah, your point Lee is that we ought to have the definition at the high level in the definitions.
And it's easy enough to write. The Board of Adjustment is the organization further described in six point oh one point.
Yeah.
B, C, whatever the references. That it's not lost.
That kind of helps them find the roadmap.
Okay, Jen's making note of that. I saw her cursor going.
Yeah, yeah, that actually makes a lot of sense. I was just trying to kind of think through this because the reason that we put these these, this section before the procedures table is because in the procedures table, it will list, you know, by application, who reviews and makes a decision on each application. And it feels nice to have kind of that description of these review and decision-making authorities, either right before or right after that table we've chosen before. But I do like kind of having that, not duplication, but kind of, you know, bringing that into the definitions chapter too. Because that's the other place that if you were looking through this document, you would say, well, how do I figure out where the planning commission description is? You'd go to the definitions that would bring you here. So I do like that train of thought.
Karen, did you recommend that the chapter six, we change them to administration or administration and application procedures?
I just noted it potentially needs a different name. I didn't come up with the name.
People agree with it, would agree with it, it's better to say just now and so you won't leave it open.
I mean, I do agree with that from Karen, because I found the first couple of pages of this section to not be related to procedures.
Yeah. So you guys want it called what? Administration and Application Procedures?
I think that's a good name.
What do you, is it, do you guys think about this? Do you want it, administration and application procedures? Or do you just want to make two sections? One is administration at a high level and then application procedures as a standalone chapter? I'm thinking about somebody trying to work.
I thought the administration portion of this was so small that it was fine being one section.
Yeah, I don't think, I agree. I don't think it mirrors. You've got seven chapters. I don't think it mirrors going to eight.
And chapter.
Although there's some logic to it.
Yeah.
Chapter six has several distinct subsections, one of which is this.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, the duties and review, duties of review and decision-making bodies. That's this particular section. And then there's, I don't know, the general procedures applicable to all applications. And then you get into specific application types where it gives you, you know, what needs to go into an application for subdivision or a Board of Adjustment variance. That shows up in a later segment of the chapter.
And they have to be identified in this chapter as well.
I'm sorry, what?
They have to be identified in this chapter as well, because we have tables that will say CC.
Yeah.
BC, so on and so forth. We need to identify what those are. If you're looking at a table, you can quickly reference right during this chapter.
Yeah, that's one of the holes in this section that's in front of you that Jen referenced at the table that talks about the different application types and who the review and the decision-making bodies are, that we're anticipating a a column in there that when you look at Board of Variants, it says, see this section. And then, you know, and the beauty of the technical age, when it's hot linked, you can click that little link and you will land right where you're supposed to be. So.
Keep in mind, we also have chapter one, titled administrative.
That's the very, the general enabling language around the code that establishes the city's right to adopt these rules and regulations. And I can't remember what else is. It's, that one was a pretty short chapter, if I remember right.
It's called general provisions.
Thank you.
Yep.
General something.
So just while we're at it, six point zero one, general procedures is really aren't, there aren't any procedures in six point oh one. It's
Correct.
The subtitle six point oh one, oh two zeros is probably closer to it.
Thank you. I think that's supposed to say general provisions. Good catch.
General provisions works, but it's under this heading called administration. Somebody, there's a room for improvement if somebody comes up with this.
And maybe we actually title six.
It's not general procedures. You're right. There's no procedure. Exactly, section. Yeah.
Good point. Could you move the microphone a little closer to you so that we can make sure we're hearing you? Thank you. You were going to say something, Jen?
No, it's okay. I think I wanted to let them kind of finish that out. But I'm wondering even about six point oh one being titled something about general administration rather than general, what was I supposed to say? General provisions? But definitely procedures is not the correct word in there. I agree.
So where are we? Comment three?
Um, let's see, we've made it through one and three, and then two is a pretty easy one. Somehow we got town manager instead of city manager in there. So we'll, we'll fix that. Let's see. So now we're at four. Uh, this was, and Larry, if I understand your comment correctly, it, the flow of the Board of Adjustment section goes number one, membership in terms. And then we had number two, conflict of interest, then three, powers and duties. And all the others go one membership in terms, and then two, powers and duties. So I think all we need to do is kick conflict of interest to P, and then the two under it would be little I, little I, I. So just kick these over one, one notch so that they would still fall under this membership in terms. Does that address your comment? Because your comment was that it just isn't consistent.
Well, I was taken from the other angle with Don was taken from his comment. Number one basically says, oh, come, city council, planning commission have shorter provisions than Board of Adjustment. I was saying, take this section for Board of Adjustment and see if we can just narrow it down to the provisions we had for the other boards.
Okay, gotcha.
I don't think we can since where all of their enabling language lives, it does not live somewhere else in the charter or the rest of municipal ordinances. So it does need to be here and it does need to be that long. And Councilmember Nakai would actually like to say something.
I was actually just going to say what Karen, what you just said, which was it has to be all of this because this is their entire rule set and it lives nowhere else.
Yeah, I came to understand that as well. But that's my initial comment.
Yeah, so.
And there's been, yeah, thank you for that. There's been other places I've worked where a lot of the duties or functions associated, like even planning commission was not located somewhere else. That was part of the planning and zoning section. And so that also showed up within, you know, this, this type of situation, this type of area of the code. But this in Woodland Park is not the case that it does live somewhere else. So. Yeah.
So never mind.
No worries. Well, and I had a thought because you did bring that up. You'll see, I had a note in here when I was reviewing this that we and Karen, please just tell me if this would work or not. Is there an option to add this to that? Is it title two of the municipal code where others are added? Or do we want to just keep it in the zoning, the UDC?
It's an easier pitch to the city council if it's all in the Unified Development Code as opposed to saying, oh, put something, put it somewhere.
I would need to touch base with Nina. And it potentially is this way because of history and state statute and how things were established. And initially, a planning commission was probably what was required first. And then at some other subsequent point, after the city does adopt zoning, with that comes the Board of Adjustment. So I imagine that's how we got here is probably a historical evolution consistent with how state statute has evolved. I'm comfortable with it here, quite honestly. And the way, I really am comfortable with where we're going with this.
But, but it's worth looking at to see if we want to move it into a section two or something like that to keep this simpler, put it at a high level, ignoring the historical background, because that doesn't make sense to anybody that doesn't have a history in it.
It's all a matter of being able to find it. And the way it's being set up, this stuff can be found. So that's, I'm comfortable with this. You know, and in working within what we are trying to restructure and using existing language and not rocking the boat too hard, but only where and when it really needs to be rocked. So that's, I I hear what you're saying, but I'm really quite comfortable with what we've got in front of you.
One thing I didn't know, maybe we can talk about it now because it's relevant to it, is that a lot of these commissions and boards and so forth, all have rules of procedure or bylaws. And the Board of Adjustment has bylaws and I know they do.
Right, our rules of procedure.
Planning Commission has bylaws, rules of procedures. Maybe we should reference that we do have those and they can be found somewhere.
Yeah, what's said in here is what gives us the authority to have those rules of procedure.
I would need to go back and look, but I suspect that the other existing language in the regulations where it establishes planning commission, historic preservation committee, that's where it references the ability of that board to establish rules of procedure or bylaws. So I think it exists just in that other location that we are referencing here. I'm highly confident it exists actually from.
Planning Commission is authorized to adopt bylaws.
And that's located?
Two point four zero point zero two zero.
Yeah, I know HPC contains similar language.
It may not for Historical Preservation Commission, Prab.
No, HPC is there.
I think it's for Historic Committee, two point zero four. I think it's over Historic Committee, that's two point zero four.
Two point four four.
Does the city council have um bylaws?
They they have something. They just recently redid them. I forget what it's called. Catherine can tell us.
It's a, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, the uh council rules of procedure, basically, is what they're called. Real difficult. We just adopted them.
Okay, Historic Preservation, two point four four point zero two zero. See, bylaws. The committee shall establish and operate according to bylaws, substitute approval of same by city council. So. Yeah.
It's there.
There, it's there. Um, it's Board of Adjustment that all lives in the zoning regulations.
Right.
We're trying to keep you alive and fully empowered.
Well, maybe again, just to give a simple, just a brief description of what each of the bodies do. High Commission offers decisions and recommendations. Okay.
And powers and duties doesn't cover that, Larry?
Um. Yes, it does.
Okay.
If you know the charter, it talks about deployment.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Our powers and duties talks about conference plan, recommendations and decisions. Yeah, this is good.
Okay, it covers it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. I was just looking up, um, let me see here, did I skip a comment? We're on.
We already talked about that.
Okay, I was just trying to read that one. Alright, so then the next one that Larry made a comment on was the um. Colorado statute reference thirty one dash twenty three. Um, and I did just pull that up to see what all is in there. I'm trying to, it's it's a very lengthy statute, so.
A lot of it, master, having a master plan, that process.
Yeah, master plan. It ha- it has quite a bit in here, so I don't know.
It's quite normal to have that general reference back to state law. Um, other codes I've been a part of, that's actually part of the the general enabling language under the general provisions in a chapter one. Uh, it's just more specifically identified for certain boards. Here within these particular sections to just reference back to to state law. Um, so it's, it's a pretty normal way.
I looked it up also, and and try to think, realize there's no way you're gonna be able to try and summarize it. You'll fail miserably if you try, and you don't want to try, and as Karen alluded, you don't want to try and copy it all.
Okay, perfect. Uh, let's see, specify, we already talked about this, specify the specific Board of Adjustment powers and duties. Karen and I are gonna continue to work on that. It's still in a number of sections, so we need to pull that in um accurately. Um, and then again, what are the additional Board of Adjustment powers that are described in the statute, the state statute? Um, and I think we just all agreed that we'll just leave that as a reference. We can reference a specific section if we need to, though. I don't know why we did not reference a specific section.
For what?
For Board of Adjustment. I don't know that there is a state statute.
Yeah.
Board of Adjustment may exercise.
There is, we just didn't, um, I'm pretty sure that's. Um, I just, we didn't get that far in that particular section.
Right.
And working off the current language, so it may not be in our current language either.
I think the stat.
Now, what what I'd like to do on the the details on Board of Adjustment, for example. Is uh, we submitted, gave some things to Logan a couple of years ago, that the the board. Recommended changes to the city code. That we would wanna see incorporated. Karen's gonna be looking and and company are gonna be looking those over again. Uh, I'd like to be able to run that back through the existing board to make sure we still feel whatever comments. Uh, Karen and and Logan give us on that, some of the details. Um, for example, and Karen pointed out a boo boo that we made, we were talking about. Increasing the the term for the board members from three to four years, because we thought. That the Planning Commission was a had a four year term instead of a three year term, and we said, let's make this all consistent. What I think we ought to consider doing, for example, for consistency on some of our boards is. Since the term for Planning Commission is spelled out in the city charter. We might wanna talk about not having the the detail in here, but simply saying that. Certainly for the Board of Adjustment, and I don't know about other. Things, but but having them just say, we'll have the same terms, term limitations as the. Um. As the Planning Commission does. Our 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 idea was there, if there are different term limits. Is there a real reason behind having different term limits? And if you can't find any real good reason, why not? Let's be consistent throughout the city on things like term limits.
I'd have to go back and look at absolutely every single board, but three years appears to be a fairly consistent term. And again, this is about where the language is already living and existing. The Planning Commission staff lives in section two point four of the city ordinances, and in that section. Um, it spells out three year terms for three year overlapping terms for the membership. Minimum five members up to nine members of the Planning Commission. Historic Preservation lives in two point four four, and it spells out lengths of terms. Board of Adjustment, all the language associated with Board of Adjustment, including term lengths, lives in this part of the code. And it's currently three years. We're just carrying that over as three years. So I think you've already got the consistency.
About the details. Um, which again, I'd like you guys to look at. I would certainly not be opposed to. Saying the term limitations here, instead of saying three years. Pointed to the.
No, 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 no. You want it spelled out here, so that we're not doing a scavenger hunt to go back and, well, what's this, what's that? This is the best practice to do this. I appreciate what you're saying, but this is best practice. And I'm trying to, trying to help keep Woodland Park close to best practice.
Okay, I'm just, I was trying to guard against getting the enemy out of sync for no good reason.
They operate independently. It doesn't matter.
Well, I know that. I know that. We felt it was important to try to bring it together. Uh, the other thing I wondered about is we talked in here, and I think we talk in other places. About. Meeting attendance and and things like that. Um. Do we need to clarify? In this day, that. You can. Attend a meeting virtually as well as in person, like we talk about. Uh, you know, if if a regular member on the Board of Adjustment is not there. The chair can appoint or shall appoint an alternate uh to. Become a regular member for that decision. Uh, but we wanna make it clear that the the regular member does not necessarily. Have to be here in person. Uh, what we were recommending was just use the words in person or virtually. See where that might cascade and other.
Common practice when we take attendance, no one asks. You're here in in person and virtually, so I. I don't think that's really necessary.
City Council come up with this, some language on this several years ago during the pandemic, the dressing. Or the council, the dressing for the council, what what was present, what had been attending version?
I'm not any help on that. I was in Oregon.
Yeah, we. Yes, yes, we did cut, we did pass a resolution in twenty twenty that allows for virtual attendance. Um, but the other thing I might, I was gonna say about that, Lou, is maybe we, you add that to your rules of procedure. That virtual is is acceptable.
We can, we can do that. We didn't include it in the rules of, so I'll have to double check. The thought was, we would, we would put it at at the higher level, but I'll double check what's in the rules now.
Use the Navy model. It doesn't say you can't, then.
Yeah, cause ours are, ours are also explicit in our rules of procedure. It just, it discusses virtual.
I'll I'll go back and make sure that we have it there. If not, we'll bring it forward.
Sounds good.
Alright. Um. Did I already say this comment? I can't remember. Uh, the additional BOA powers that are described in the Colorado statute, I think we did just talk about that. Um, I did look up that section, so um, I'll double check that that section is is the right one, but I pulled that out of. Um, and then another Board of Adjustment document that I believe Karen had sent me, so um. Alright, now, Larry, you had a comment about a new power for, let's see, nine. Well, what are we in?
Or was that?
Yeah. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
After probably eighteen or seventeen. Did you pull that language from somewhere, or was that a brand new recommendation?
That's a brand new recommendation.
Yeah, well, and what you see here in their parks and rec was like a gen and my best stab and assessment at what their role is. Relative to uh land development applications, and now per the note in the document, we had not had a chance to to circle back to the. The Parks and Rec Director.
I just wanted to, you you, that's that's how I thought you were approaching that. And I thought there's a new caller, you're allowed to recognize this, cause I look at them as being authority of. What could be significant or says to lands.
Okay.
If you get the recommendation on those.
And Jen, if you wanna take a minute and read what Larry wrote there, just for the rest of the group, since they didn't.
Absolutely. Review and provide recommendations regarding parks, trails, and open space inclusion for development projects. Containing significant or sensitive lands and characteristics that warrant protect and or pres- preservation. Oh, sorry, warrant protection and our preservation.
So I think we'll add that into what we run past um the Parks and Rec Director and now. Look back at uh any resolution that was part of establishing that board.
And Karen, I'm assuming that when you take that to them, they'll have an opportunity to put their own language in, and then we'll see this again?
It'll come back around, um. I don't know that you'll get it in this type of a detailed work session, but it 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 will come back around for review. And it's actually, I think, September eleventh, when we're scheduled to be in front of Parks and Rec on a a couple of different things we've been working on related to this regulation.
It is, perhaps it's covered under the existing powers and duties to adopt criteria for review, but that's probably worth. Researching or considering.
Thank you. No, I I I I like the provision there for the um. That contains significant or sensitive lands, because that almost falls in under the adventure. Project that we picked up, because that is a sensitive land area, and it does have a lot of historical value to it. Actually, that's what I was thinking of.
Okay. So everyone's okay with that, with us passing that by the? Adding that in for the Parks and Rec Director review?
Yep.
Alright. Um, let's see, item ten, this is in Historic Preservation Commission. Specifically address the duty of the HPC to offer recommendations and comments regarding the designation of historic landmarks. So, yeah, go ahead, Karen.
Let's say, I think I'm highly confident that that's spelled out in section or two point four four. Um, since that is one of the major things that they do and why they exist. Um.
Review and make decisions on any alteration to the designated landmark, historical landmark.
No, it's up higher. It's there, I promise.
Review resources.
I promise.
Review resources nominated for historical landmark and make recommendations to city council.
Yeah, two point four four point zero two zero D. They have nine powers listed.
And that's for the criteria, so.
But that's where their powers and duties is listed.
And again, I thought it'd be a good idea to articulate what their principle, one of their principal powers and duties. Is.
Yeah, I guess my comment would be why have them here in the section at all if the. Have another section that we can reference to them. Like, why explain their powers and duties if we already have a section for that?
Other than possibly how their role in the review process. Cause that's what, we're getting to that.
If we've gotten the same code, one place that references another, to me, instead of referencing another, we wanna say. It does, it does this and this, and all the other stuff that are in the other reference, or just reference in the first place, go look at.
Wow, yeah, I thought for City Council, Planning Commission, since it was already covered somewhere else, we just said, go look there. And so I'm thinking, maybe, I think for the historical preservation committee. Yeah, committee, same applies. It's ready, it's ready coverage, just reference the existing.
You know, yeah, and I was, I was comfortable reading it, just referencing that.
When when I looked at this, I was thrown for a loop right off the bat where it talks about membership in terms, says. The city Woodland Park, chapter two point four four dash oh two oh. What the hell is that? Yeah, I think you left out the words, musical code.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
We know what it means. You're right.
I appreciate that.
Comes back to our first topic of discussion tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a little inconsistent inconsistency in this section. I think we were trying to. Be clear, so I think we need to come up with a consistent terminology and referencing the municipal code chapters, but yes. Good catch.
Well, I.
On the powers and duties where it says, in chapter of the municipal code, but unfortunately, that's the second part of. No, it's B, not A.
Mm hmm.
Someone needs to be an expert on how we reference this, cause it's actually, it's not chapter two point forty four point twenty, that's not a chapter. It's it's subsection two point forty four oh two oh of the Woodland Park Municipal Code.
Yeah, then.
I I think that's, but I can't guarantee it's consistently referenced throughout the code then.
That's a good point. Is, in this chapter, in this title too, they are listed as chapters, if you can see my screen. I I don't know how to make this any bigger. Um. But I do, you're right. I wonder if some of the other titles don't have them as chapters. Oh, they do.
It it's actually safer to just say municipal code in the number, and you don't need to say section, title.
True.
You, yes, that that's.
The number tells you where, what it.
That's a good point. Yeah, municipal code, section two four 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 point two, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it a section, a subsection?
Right.
Doesn't apply because it's not.
Yeah, I guess my previous comment was that I think what you and Karen have done is really good, and I would just keep it general like that. For the, the items that have other sections, just reference it and move on.
Yeah, but Larry, are you okay with the, on your comment nine and ten? Yeah, but Larry, are you okay with the, on your comment nine and ten? That those comments really reflect a possible revision to chapter two? Title two?
Sorry.
No, two point. I did it myself.
I, I guess I kind of disagree with what Cole just said about keeping it general. I wanna see a little specifically about what their primary power and duty is for, if you read this section, you know what they're called.
Just make sure we don't conflict with somewhere else.
That's true, but same time.
Sometimes less is more.
Point of clarification, that's all.
But, but back to nine and ten, are you okay leaving those, those comments out of this chapter six and, and referring that to a possible revision for title two?
I'll, I'll refer to what the, the commission.
Okay.
Is the correct way to go. Once, once all, which we all agree upon, it's either Historical Preservation Commission in D or in Historical Presu-, Historic Preservation Board in one A.
And that's our.
Commission and a board.
It's a committee, actually. No, seriously, it is. But thank you for catching that.
Historical Preservation Committee, you're right. Okay.
Yeah, no, and that's, as you guys see, that's where, you know, writing code language is, can be very challenging, especially since we have some commissions, we have boards, we have committees. So a blanket search and replace does not get you where you want to go.
Hey?
We can't stand in two A of historical, we can't su- suddenly come up with HPC out of nowhere. I, I think I know what it means, cuz in the previous section, a subsection is used, but
Yeah.
It's, it's gotta be spelled out unless, you gotta use it a lot and wanna create a.
Well, yeah, they did it, they did it the right way and under the crap. If you look at um, scroll down about half a page.
Yeah, and I was just getting lazy.
Well, and if you're, if you're gonna put things like that just as a, a definition, in the definition section, that's where you can first introduce the HPC and.
It's, it, it's useful here because below, there's gonna be tables that don't have room for all these, and they're gonna
Long words.
They're gonna be abbreviating, so it's, it's very useful if the abbreviations are self-contained within this chapter.
Right.
But in general, I agree, it's just, you know, that's what gloss reason.
Yeah.
Dictionaries are for.
Yes, it is.
Don, getting back to your comment again.
Yeah.
I, I, I will, I'd like to see number nine continue on for the discussion with the Parks and Rec director. But number ten, I can say, let's just go ahead and keep it clean.
Okay.
Well, we, we don't need to articulate that.
And I, I wasn't commenting on whether I was heard or again it, but just where ultimately where it might land.
Okay. Let's see here. So Larry, are you okay with that then? I know uh, with just not not describing some sort of general duty, but always just referencing the existing powers and duties?
Yeah.
If they exist, okay. Because the one, the one issue, like on planning commission, I realize there are recommend, recommending board for the most part. But there are applications that, that you guys probably make a decision on, maybe one or two. Um, and those will show up in that review and decision making, the procedures table. Um, it'll be really clear in there who's doing a review and who's doing decision, and I think it um, it keeps things simpler if we keep as little out of here as possible, and then that table that follows right after this, you really start to see where the review and decision authorities are.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, let's see, where were we? Eleven might be one we already just talked about. We did, okay. And then twelve is just kind of a clerical, again, same kind of thing that we just talked about. It was a comment about adding the city of Woodland Park. So I think we just need to go, do another pass through here to make sure we're really consistent about how we're referencing the municipal code. Um, thirteen. This is in the Planning Director Powers and Duties. Add a new subsection and renumber subsequent subsections accordingly. So the new subsection would be to render recommendations to the planning commissions and city council regarding applications and permits requiring their review and recommendations or decisions. I see, cuz we have rendered decisions on applications, but you're saying also make recommendation on applications to the other uh, review bodies.
Yes. I mean, that's what, what happens now when we get to chapter.
That's the biggest thing to do.
Exactly.
Okay, that sounds good. Karen, are you okay with that? I mean, it does make sense. It is a.
A selfish.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. I was just checking the chat. I saw there were a couple things in the chat, but I think there are things we just talked about, so we're, we should be good there. Okay. Um.
This, this section does at the very beginning of it, he says the Planning Director, Parent Director. It then, in the next section, it says once says director, and multiple times throughout it, it says Planning Director. Director seemed like kind of generic term to adopt is using occasionally, but rarely as the term. Um, I'd be inclined to just keep, just say Planning Director. To rate the parent director and delete and add planning in the second line of two. And later on, it has, there's other uses of Planning Director throughout this, and this rather than it, and then rather, rather than creating a short form for a generic term and saying you're supposed to know, always know what it means.
It only saves one word. Um, you may wanna put like PD if you intend to use that abbreviation later.
Oh, and PD is, PD is worse than director, just cuz it doesn't, it doesn't sound like anything.
Yeah, it just.
I'm just saying, if you want an abbreviation, this would be the place to put it.
I would say just Planning Director throughout, since we have other department directors for other aspects of municipal government. It's, you know, it, it's more important that it, this reference, Planning Director or designee is kind of because I don't want people hung up about, well, you didn't sign this. It's like, no, I have a team for that. There's a reason it's not a one-person department.
Can you take care of that with a definition maybe? Planning Director?
You know, and I appreciate what you guys are saying about definitions. Um, but when you're talking about boards and stuff like this, this is a more normal place to put that um, versus the, the definists and sections were referring to like terms of art.
Definitely should be a clarification, should never like authorities and rules shouldn't be buried in the definition.
You're a hundred percent right.
Yeah, so I, I'm more comfortable with it here.
Spell it out here.
And everyone.
Where does it mean?
Okay. And I think in other chapters, we have been very conscientious to spell out Planning Director rather than just Director, so um, I think this is a good decision.
This, when you say or designate, does that, that imply there needs to be some sort of delegation?
That's happened, that happens at an administrative level, um, because you know, the different members of the planning department team, they all have job descriptions um, that that correlate with like level of experience and years and background, and um, then there's just getting the work done in terms of who gets assigned to what particular tasks. So that really is the, the administrative functioning of the, the department that does not need to be explicitly spelled out within the regulation.
I was just thinking, if someone were to challenge something that was, to say, well, I don't think, believe that was a, was or was not approved, and if it didn't have the, the planning directors John Hancock on it, then how, how would you clarify that? Sensual ambiguity, that's all I'm.
Well, they get a paycheck, so they're employed by the city. I'm sorry.
No, but it here says, doesn't say the city.
Yeah, they're, they're.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to avoid the situation where someone could re-pick a net and, and say, well, this, this didn't count because the planning director didn't sign.
In other parts of the city charter, it'll say like the city clerk and or designate, or city manager and or designate.
And.
So it, it's following in with that. No, it does follow, but there, there is more to this. First off, we create a new term in here called.
By having the word ten designate gives the director the authority.
Oh, yes, yeah, she clearly has the authority. I was.
Well, no, but I mean, to, to designate someone else to have her signature authority for that purpose. To, to, to clear up the, the, anybody that complains and says, well, Karen didn't sign it, but CJ did.
And they, the, the team works under the, the direction of the director. So ultimately, it's the director who's responsible for decisions.
I, I, that's kind of wild. I just, when things are delegated, even if it's just an email, you know, I always like to, to know that there's you know, okay, you, you had CJ signed it, and well, what gave CJ that authority? Well, here, here's the note, here's the note from Karen, said CJ, you got this. You know, that's, that's.
And Don, that's what I've seen done.
And, and what is it?
When I was working was, was, yeah, you had to have some written, back before emails, uh, you had to have a, a letter that said so and so is my designate and has the authority to sign.
Well, any planner in the trenches will tell you, one of the worst conversations they ever wanna have is to go to the director and say, I screwed up.
Whatever.
Yeah. But I mean, you know, I, I've, I've had my moments in my career where you're going, I, I, I'm really sorry, this is a mess. Help me fix it. You know, it's, it's you know, we're all human and we, we were vast and so, yeah, no, it's.
But I mean, you all can do this with an internal procedure, just make sure that the designation is something that's clear and has some.
Just to help, and make sure there's not some different inference in different places.
Yeah.
What is an appointed designate rather than a designate? Hmm, cuz we, we created the term appointed designate in some places, like the city engineer, or their appointed designate.
That's probably just.
Someplace else, it's appointed designate too. Should we scrap that term? That sounds more formal than being a designate. I'm not sure what it means.
Sounds more formal. I, I don't, I can't, I can't decide in my brain that it means anything different.
Well, the one in top of page six, second lines, there's an example, at least there, someplace else, it says appointed designate on page five.
Number planning director.
Yeah, number one.
We will check that.
There, or their designate.
We will check that for consistency and um, and look where else this kind of shows up in the rest of meetings and coordinations.
In deciding the designate, if, if I were your boss, I wouldn't think much of J near the bottom of page five. In the absence of A, it should be the planning director. Should be said, and their designate, the city manager should act as planning director. You don't wanna say, if you're gone, the city, city manager has to do it. Well, that's not the way any organization I've seen they want to do it. In the absence, if it read in the absence of the planning director and or their, and their designate, the city manager shall act as planning director. But every time you go away, all your work shouldn't flow up, it should flow down, and you're, you're responsible for being fixing it.
I will, we can check on this, but I think that provision has more to do with um, an extended time period where you don't have a planning director on staff. That's not that I'm cruising the Caribbean for a week.
Yeah, I thought that was more of a contingency plan for a vacancy than.
Yeah, uh, which gets to a different point that is not worded that way, so I jumped ahead on the lead.
That's why I worded, in the absence of the planning, planning director and their uh, and, and both of them are gone.
Yeah.
Like, then, then the city manager may be stuck with it, and he'll redesignate somebody else or something, but you don't, you don't make the desk full up, let's just go, usually. I would wanna keep your.
It says they, in the absence and a vacancy, two different situations, so just.
Yeah.
So not, if a vacancy does blow up until they appoint someone to take that duty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, decide how they wanna, send you wanna do it.
Which, which section are you on, boss lock?
I wanna, I wanna.
Right near the bottom of five, J.
I would like to check some other resources and um, just narrow that down for you all. Cuz I really think it is, probably should be in, you know, the event about vacancy that it, but well, let, let us, let us check on that to make sure that we're covering it from all directions as best we can.
Awesome, and I think you guys are right. It, it should be in the, in the what's the word I'm looking for? In the event of a vacancy of that position, the city manager is the decision-making authority. You would still have other planning staff helping out with review, but that final, any administrative decisions, um, any final decisions that the planning director is making would get elevated to the city manager instead. I, that's how I, I'm pretty sure that one is meant to read, so we can, like you said, Karen.
Would assume, will assume the duties of.
Right, yes, that's a good way to say that. Okay. Um. Let's see, I think that was everything on this page, so item fourteen, this is at the end of the city engineer section, uh, there was a note to add at the end of this sentence related to proposed permits and applications, so the sentence would read that the city engineer or their appointed designate is responsible for the review and recommendation to the planning director of engineering requirements as specified within this code, but instead it would say related to proposed permits and applications. That, I think that makes sense, as, as specified within this UDC related to proposed permits and applications. Does that work for everybody?
They're nodding yes.
Okay. Their heads are so tiny on my screen, so I can't.
You can't tell when we're nodding, yes, or falling asleep.
Yeah, right. Yeah, no, from what she sees on her end, she, she can't see the heads.
Yeah, actually, it's funny. I can see some of the heads, but your TV screen is covering half of the commission, so. Um. Let's see here, um, where was I? Number fifteen. So now we're getting into the next section, which is, which is your common review procedures. Uh, there were no comments on the purpose and pre-application conference.
They skip past um, six, page six, just a question and.
Yeah.
Twenty B applicability, for all application types per table six, et cetera. Is that clear what it means? I, I, I think it means for all application types identified in table six point oh one, something happens for all other applications. Not it, it, down below is not listed within, is not listed, is per mean the opposite of not listed.
I like your terminology, Lee, that says for all application types listed or identified in table blah, blah, blah.
Okay, that's clear, I think that's clearer.
Yeah, yeah, they're clear.
So that was for all applications identified in.
Yep.
And then two, all applications in this code not identified.
Not identified in, okay. Okay, perfect.
Small syntax item on the next page, C three, procedure C three. Uh, no, sorry, send this, send to C two, just to be parallel, should be at the conference, the project will be discussed. Any potential issues will be highlighted, and the formal review will be outlined, just to make parallel structure.
Will be outlined. Will be outlined.
Otherwise, you're changing tense within the list.
She already flies back.
I don't know, guys, if you guys can see this and how many of you use like Adobe products, but. They've changed their little symbols, I've noticed. They're like little. Little call out bubbles. Anyway. Kind of fun. Ever changing world. Um. Okay, so then item fifteen is within the applications, the middle and processing section. Uh, we have is a question, is six point oh two point oh three oh solely for planning applications or does this section? Apply to all the various application types of applications. And it's the second, so it would apply to all of the applications. Coming through the planning department. So I think that's where planning came in, but I had made some notes that maybe we want to. Um. Change that terminology a little bit. And Karen, I don't know if you have a a preferred a preferred term. I mean, it's typically development applications, but it's not all for development. Because you get variances, appeals.
Well, that's where I think what you said earlier. At one point that said, uh, the applications identified in table. Blah, 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 blah. Because you.
Okay.
Variances and things like that. So rather than calling the planning applications, the applications of the type identified in. Table six point oh one.
Think it'd be easier if we had the table.
Yeah.
It's probably not worth talking about without the table in front of us.
But the point being.
You you sound it sounds right.
But the point being, doing it this way, well, if the table gets changed, we don't have to change it seven places in the code, so.
Yeah, but but to appreciate it, we need to see the table.
Amen.
And Jen and I are very aware of that. That was part of our conversation in terms of what are we getting you guys next? Because we realize we're very aware, we cannot talk about individual application types without you guys having seen that table. Um, be because you really from watching you guys for for many, many work sessions now. Um, you will be very annoyed with us if we tried to do it any other way to give you the table first, so we. We hear you loud and clear. And we respect that. So we're we're trying to honor what you need to give us good feedback. So.
You know, I I think the the one we're just working on that the requirements shall be applicable to all applications. Oops, now it's covered. Unless otherwise noted within UDC.
Yeah, and I want to make an important distinction here that at another point in these regulations, there will be a section that talks about permits. So those are things like the permit currently called the zoning development permit. Uh, the the permit for the single family home, the permit for the detached garage. There's a whole other section around permits that's going to show up, and that's very different than this. Which is the the entitlement end of things or variance and appeals. This section really is about the stuff that. Um, largely goes through hearing processes. Uh, some of it.
Things like conditional use permits.
Even though it says permit.
So so.
Yeah, I know.
I avoid the term as a way of descri- defining.
Yeah, no, and 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 they're unfortunately because of how this works, there's going to be a little annoyance like that, which is. Whether you like it or not, industry standard. Um.
Well, look back, back to the point. What's covered is in the tape.
Yeah, and we will. Venese it as best we can to be uh as concise and articulate as we can. And the objective is to be able to find things cleanly and not have to look through a total of whatever twenty six and twenty three added together is like fifty whatever.
And the way this is written also, these procedures will be self-contained within that section, so you won't have to bounce around. Like these procedures apply over here and sometimes over there, once over there, but not not over there, and it'll all be self-contained and um. So for these.
Consolidated.
Yeah, for these procedures, for these processes, here are the procedures done. Yep. I think it's very much better. On um. Comment sixteen, your answer makes perfect sense, so that's good.
Or sixteen.
Okay, um, Don was questioning whether or not the applet the fees for the different application types should show up here. And the answer is a resounding no, uh, because uh, when you when you follow this through the whole adoption process. Um, to ever amend the code, it has to go through a similar adoption process. So even when you're wanting to do. Um, uh, like an annual increase or something, it's much easier if that's set out by resolution and clearly articulated on an annual basis, so. Um, a lot of times in ordinances, you will see the enabling language that says and fee set by resolution. So it connects the dots and points you appropriately.
It'd be nice if it were there, um, but it'd be a maintenance nightmare. Um, I don't know if we if there's some convenient reference, we can point people to a fee table.
That's part of the tools that we use at that administrative level in terms of of working with applicants. You know, that that's something we typically maintain based on what happens uh on typically an annual basis around the resolution and and increases to those. But. I believe on the city website now, there's a fee sheet associated with land use applications that's already available that gets updated on an annual basis.
And it's not always an increase.
It's not always what?
It's not always an increase. Sometimes it's.
Yeah, occasionally might decrease, but.
It means politically correct.
Yeah. Correct. Thank you for that. All right, Jen.
All right. Sorry, I I was talking there for a second right when you brought up item sixteen and I was on mute, so but you guys ran through that one nicely. Um.
Oh, okay.
So item seventeen. Um, so here's some suggestions Larry has. Where are we at here? We're in. Applications, middle processing. Procedure, application submittal, fees. And then application review and referral. So Larry, you have a few suggestions in here. Um, do you want to walk us through these? Because I'm, I think what you're saying is to pull some of this stuff out into. Um, new um subsections. For referrals and public notice.
Yes.
Okay.
So let's let's do number seventeen first.
Yep.
And this this is something that I've worked with previously. When I used to actually have a job. And that is. That the planning director would have the ability to take any administrative application that was before the planning department. And refer to the planning commission and the city council for public hearing. And the reason for that is because some sometimes you don't realize. Working with administrative. Application that it could be controversial. And if it's controversial and it has policy applications, it should go through a process. And that's what this section will do. Have the planning director has the ability to refer any administrative decision. To to uh planning commission in the city council.
That sounds pretty substantive, like a pretty substantive change. It requires some real thought that. That I'm not sure is part of the tasking for a recodification.
I thought about that too, Lee, and I thought this would be the good good time to introduce this concept.
To just pull on thread a little bit, so. Would. With the playing record, basically, when that decision is made, it's now going to go through all the. Planning commission and the rest of the planning process or recommended the planning commission or city council for that task.
No.
Is it a recommendation or is it like it's?
Plan department have the the planning director, the head of the authority, say, this is not going to be a public hearing process. And Lee's right, this is such change.
And it's it's saying the planning director says, gee, this looks like a hot issue. I should be determining it as an administrative matter, but. Let's end at the planning commission first and then let the city council do the, I mean. It may or may not be good politics depending on the situation, but it's not a good way to to run it. Administrative apparatus, it's supposed to get it. Supposed to have an administrator, administrative person make a decision. So they make it yes, they make it no, and if they city tell me doesn't like it, they go see Lou.
Again, I I I've used this kind of provision in another job that I've had. Working in the planning department. And before the planning director or designate to make a decision whether or not they want to refer. It would be discussed with the planning director and certainly with the city manager. This is why I want to do this. And it makes sense. And yeah, I've been shot down and I've been approved. Go take this course. But I agree. I mean, this is probably a pretty radical idea, but it's worth considering.
So so how does it? This type of thing happen in practice today?
I've not had that latitude with other jurisdictions that I have worked for. Um. So I I appreciate Larry even just bringing it up to plant the seed. Um. And you know, not everything that we talk about gains any kind of traction or, you know, makes it to the next step or the next cut, but. Um, I I think it's worthy to 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 throw out here. Um, you know, anytime we have applications run us as professional planners. Our job is to, as best we can, explain the the rules and procedures to that applicant. And assist them in navigating the process and uh so much of the the rules of. Getting entitlements done, getting that permission to ultimately be able to apply for permits to build. Um, so many jurisdictions nowadays, it's it's really quite complicated. So the way I've explained it sometimes is like you almost need a tour guide to to navigate the the system and that's. That's what our our teams do and what we do as planners. Um, you know, you see these these pushes towards AI and automating things, but at a certain point, you still need. A person and a certain amount of human touch to to navigate a lot of things, so. Um, I I don't know that that will ever go away in this particular industry. Um, and especially since people do want to still see a decision maker. If everything was truly automated, you fit in this way, you get this. End of story. Um, that's that's not. Where uh sometimes good development comes from is is it is that collaboration and uh things that don't fit neatly. How do we weigh back and forth? Um, certain things that, you know, if everything says the trail has to go here. But there's some other geographic feature, you know, it's like, well, in that case, it makes more sense to to do this, to still get something through there, but. To to adjust to whatever's going on in the land. That's an example I can come up with. Um, so the next point I would make is that decision around. What do you potentially refer is would not be made lightly, at least for this planner. You know, you you weigh that pretty heavy because um there's the perception of, just like we you guys are talking, it's like, well, planner, why aren't you doing your job? What is this doing here in front of this board? Um, or sometimes, um, you guys even heard this before, where the developer's sitting here always like, no, I want to talk to you guys. I want you. I I don't care what staff has to say. I want to see you. Um, it's been a while since that happened, but I remember that. And you told them to go back and talk to staff. Thank you very much for your support, and I mean that sincerely. Um, so I said, I personally not navigated this, that particular option before. Um. And that's, I guess, all I got on that.
But at this point, let's just drop it.
I think it was worth a conversation, so thank you for bringing it up. But yeah, in terms of what goes forward, if this document, you're probably not included right now.
Okay. I have me.
It's not, doesn't sound like it's gaining a lot of traction. So, but thank you.
You know, I'll just summarize by saying, I found it to be a very helpful tool.
Perhaps maybe it should be a pull, not a push.
The inverse of that, um, in our particular community here, Larry, is. So much of what we have requires public hearing. We don't have. Lots of things that really are administrative. You know, so that that may be why that's potentially not. Really necessary at this point in time here in Wilma Park is so much of what we do does go to public hearing. Hey, Jen.
All right. That was a good discussion. Um. Here's another one, add subsection C and renumber all subsequent subsections accordingly to include public notice. Um, and this section does fall later, so. But I I see what you're saying there. Are you saying to add? Just add kind of a mention in here that after review, you would make that public notice per the public notice table? Because we do have the staff report should be made available to the applicant in the public part of any public notice. I'm just kind of looking through here.
And the reason I introduced a an additional public notice during the review process. Is that. Right now, the only notice that goes out is when there is a public hearing scheduled. There is not one saying there's an application coming through the door. This is this is in your neighborhood, are you concerned about it? Do you have any comments you want to make about this?
Right.
I I just think it's a good opportunity to engage. The neighborhood citizens, let them know early, or they can voice their opinions. Which may or may not influence all of the staff reports directly.
Larry, I'm not disagreeing. Could you explain a little better what the? What this works and the timing, or I'm just not sure if we understand the comment.
It it adds another level of notice. And it tells the surrounding neighborhood, either one poster or a letter. That there is an application being reviewed at this time in the planning department.
And what triggers that notice?
Is when you go through the review of the application, it's it's another stage for that notice that.
An application is it's submission of a complete application.
Yes, once that's been determined.
Which so that might be a month or it might be six months before the actual matter comes to the planning commission, but.
It could, it could, but but after it's been been clean.
Larry, I'm having a hard time talking or hearing you. Could you please make sure?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It 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 adds another layer of public notice earlier in the process. That's. You're early in the process for the neighborhood, uh. Jason property owner is now aware there's something going on. They have an opportunity to review the plans. And make their comments known to the planning department.
But we don't have a. We don't have a process for a public comment to the planning department. That comes to us.
It it only happens when we schedule a public hearing.
Right, so so I guess what I'm getting at, I'm I'm not not opposed, I'm just trying to, let's walk this dog and see if it hunts. Um. If we provide the public notice, presumably we're soliciting their feedback. But in this case, there's no actual feedback mechanism, so they can. They can be aware of it and that's nice, but they can't really act upon that in any official way, so. Well, you and then there will be public notice for that.
In a prac- in a practical sense, they would, you know, provide some additional enhancement. To the existing process, realistically, most of these notice dates are ten days ahead of time. And if some ten days is very little time for. A neighborhood in an uproar because they're putting a gas station in the neighborhood, I mean, whatever it is, in order to be able to hire engineers, hire lawyers, staff it, get public support, ten days. Doesn't really get me.
The recommendation that the board of adjustment submitted to the planning department was that. Twenty one days is a more reasonable thing. Sally felt that that was a doable. Do because ten days is makes no sense at all, not with our mail system. Yeah, so. Send out a notice.
So we. It would, this is in regard, it would it would alert the neighbor to go look and what would they do? They'd all come, they'd all march down to. Maybe bring the torch. Planting director's office and say, show me the whole application. I want to see what's going on, so we can see if my, you know. If if the neighbors want to get together and we worry about the new gas station. Or whatever, whatever the issue is.
Um, exactly the intent.
You're you're absolutely right, though. There's no real process for what do they do except? Be more ready when the thing actually comes up.
It's information.
I mean, I like the, I think there's merit to giving a longer public notice.
I mean, I like the, I think there's merit to giving a longer public notice. Because I think that that's something that we've seen lacking before this board. There's a lot of uh, public comment. Um, so there's definitely merit to that. I think it's just a question for for the city of, do you have a process? Do you have staff? To handle that.
I don't know. I don't know what what the staff's gonna do with public comment on a on application. They're still in the process of reviewing.
No, I agree, I agree.
There's another, there's another piece, it's a little bit of a public notice here and it hasn't really been mentioned. My understanding from some discussions that Prab has had and done confirmed is that. One of the things they wanted to hear about particular applications early in the process before it was before. Before the applicant had spent thousands of dollars.
Right.
Drawing, putting it to plan together, getting drawings done and such. He's paid for it and all that, for then. Then Prab hears shortly before it goes saying, you know. It really, this is a problem and wish you could do something here and they're saying. You know, you told us six months ago, we could have done it, but now we're all set to go and no one wants to hear. Prab is interested in making certain that its input. Is early, which becomes effective. Different than public notice, but it's awareness of somebody outside the sort of like a the the plant, the planner in the applicant process.
And I I am no way against early and frequent. You know, sharing of information, but. It's the unintended side effect I fear is that the the city staff gets inundated when people who want. Want to ask questions, want to listen, like, we're not, we haven't done our work yet. I can't. Wait, wait till we've done our review.
Well, now you, on the website. The planning department does have a list or description of the applications that are in work. If I recall.
Yes.
And and but nobody's gonna be.
That's.
How do I know to look for that? Maybe what we need is is just as simple as. Once a month to put something out. At a public announcement that says, hey, these these applications are in work. If you're interested. Go to the website. You know, just for information, we're not collecting comments yet.
Yeah, I think that's good feedback. I would, I wouldn't mind seeing the city post something like that on their social media or something like that, but. Make it available for the citizens. I just don't know how that, how we put that in here, because we're binding. A process.
Be in here if it becomes practice with the city to do that. As long as, you know, the list of projects is kept updated. And there's somebody who's gonna. Uh, you know, take care of the media, social media on it, which I'm sure would be Kristen.
Okay, let's. Well, no, no, you guys are having a fabulous discussion and conversation and I'm trying to. To take in all of the the different aspects of what you're saying. Keep it. I guess, keep in mind, we have a relatively small staff, so wherever we can build inefficiencies, that's helpful. Um, so to make sure I'm understanding what Larry's suggesting, an application comes in. We determine it's complete. We send out a notice to that. Properties within X number of feet at that point that say there's a pending application under review. And then as we get closer to the hearing date, we do another mailed notice and posting the property that says, hey, the hearing is this date.
Yes.
I would argue that it would be better that that initial notice just be through the. City's social media. That way you're not uh, burdening the city with additional costs.
Okay, that's like a different hitch in terms of how the city has policies around how they use the website versus what they use social media for.
But they could use social media to say, hey, go look at the applications.
Again, there are policies around how they use those two different mediums.
I've seen listing, but it's not, I'm not sure how well how effectively it's kept up. Yeah, that's conceptually, it sounds not too difficult to keep a list of. Applic- complete applications that are in the in the till being worked on with the, you know, general subject of the address when it was submitted. You know, something like that, which.
Yeah, the section of the website um, under the planning page that. I recall, people did not like the name of, but unfortunately is aptly named. Um, applications under review is what we call it. Um, and we we set that up and started using it more. Um, more frequently, especially for larger ones that were quite controversial, so it made it easy for somebody to sit at home. Whatever hour of the day or night and review the application. They weren't limited to coming in and sitting down in our offices. And as we move more and more towards all electronics, um, that's going to be the the mechanism or the 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 tool available to look at something. Um, the, it sounds like the burning question is, how would I know to go look that there's something going on in my neighborhood? I'd have to, Jen may know, um, it's, it's like. I think it's Fort Collins I'm thinking of, that the signs that they post uh, for land development cases. If I recall, they literally just say pending development application. Go look here. And it doesn't include anything around hearing dates. Or any anything related to that. It really is just. Go check out the website if you want to know what's happening on this piece of ground.
Yeah, it, we do have that. They're metal signs that the city provides and then they have the case number added on to there. Um, and that's exactly what it is. It just says development application under review. Here's the case number and people just know after seeing those over time that. As you drive by and see one of those, you go, oh, what's happening on that site and you look it up on the website, so. That that could be a really simple approach. This, a lot of communities are going to this. Noticing when an application comes in, but they have, everyone has a different way of handling, you know, how how to receive comments and things like that.
So Larry, is this for? Projects which would have a public hearing or is this for projects that are just handled administratively?
Or both?
I can see the advantage of a administrative review to notify. I'm not convinced that we need double for a public hearing, so still resolving that in my mind.
Well, by understated Fort Collins is it doesn't ever come back with a hearing date. You check the website and the hearing date may or may not have been determined. When you check the website, so if it's not determined, you need to go and check the website again to figure out when the hearing date is.
I'm not sure it's the right subject for this review, but the the idea of having a uh, an active list. Describes all all the pending applications. Even if it doesn't, I don't happen to look this up every day, but somebody in the neighborhood. Will once will tend to go through it and if it catches somebody's eye, then it spreads really fast. Stuff like this. I don't know that we have an automated emails. We can send that by address or something to somebody, but. It sounds attractive to me to have some notice available early on for. Lou's comment. Twenty-one days for the neighbors to figure out is a lot closer, is a lot more useful than ten days. Uh, just to, just because. The deck is a little stacked against neighbors who have posed to something, if they've got a matter of, they need to hire experts. It, they can't, it's a practical matter in a week and a half. So as part of just general transparency, a part of at least giving an opportunity for some. For for people to become aware of issues, if it's an issue or. Is something like this sounds attractive. If we want to tackle it now, doesn't doesn't sound a lot very highly substantive. So I think it's okay to put it in this review.
So I I think we've got. Two ideas kind of on the table here. One is an additional notification at. At the completion of the submission of the completed application. And then the, are the review timelines, what we want them to be, they're related, but those are two.
Two different.
Two different. So I would, we're gonna look at this table in a little bit. We will get to the table tonight, I I think. And that would be a perfect time for the length of the review discussion I would submit.
And and I'm not gonna be big on myself staking all the timelines from ten days to twenty or thirty or some other, some other number of days, just because. Most of the time is not an issue and I hate to slow everything down, add a week or two or three to process on every single one. I'd rather have something that could provide an opportunity for those where it's gonna be a concern to the neighbors that they have the time. But not slow down the works for everything that comes up. Yeah, last meeting, we talked about making them all like in the same timeframe though.
Um, and to your point, Lee, I can guarantee you the development community is not going to be overly supportive of going to. A longer notice for a hearing.
Yeah, I I I think that's probably just a non-starter, just because it slows the works for everything. Which is not not. Doesn't make sense.
Where my head's at, I mean, I I think we could. Turn up the volume a little bit on the early notification, but I would not make it a like a mandatory posting type. Or or, you know, public mailing or anything like that. I would just. The, make the information clearly available.
Yeah, I would, I would think just as a suggestion on the on the early notification, not not the hearing date, but the. Um, the idea of maintaining a list that would be posted on the website. Where they could dig into it if they wanted, make it clear that you're not soliciting comments yet. And then just on the property that's affected, don't worry about. A hundred feet or two hundred feet or three hundred feet away at this point. Just post a sign on that property. That says there is a pending application. Uh, review date will be identified later. And that should be enough to queue for people to go look at what's pending. Under review that you have listed on your website. I wouldn't want, I wouldn't expect or ask you to to have a mailing or anything like.
So there's both things assigned similar to what Karen's indicated in Fort Collins, they have. It says this property has applied for a.
Put a sign on the property.
Yeah, I think they literally say pending development application. It's been a long time since I've been to Fort Collins.
But something fairly generic, not with specific times, not the public notice signage. Not that they could make an error on, it's just something, it's just its basics and.
You put a QR code to the link that you've got your listing under the pending or the under review stuff.
I I think too with the addition of the early notification to. Jason property owners or poster, whatever. Provides the neighbors, the people that are concerned. Additional time to know what's, understand what's going on, what's happening and how it may impact them to express those opinions.
I think that's important.
Yeah, Larry, I'm thinking of de-scoping and even from what you're suggesting is. Just having the notice on the property, not not reaching out to the. Adjacent property owners yet. Let that be part of the review cycle.
Well.
But for starters, just put the sign up there and let the word spread through the neighborhood.
It would be, it'd be a step in the right direction. Yeah, and and just make the signage different than what. We put up right now for when there's going to be a public hearing. So that, you know. And, you know, advertising, you gotta change your. Your signage every once in a while or people will ignore it, so make sure that, you know, if the pre one. Is one design and use the other one for the other, so it catches their attention.
A white one or a yellow one?
Yeah.
So it seems like we all are in a gray and song signage. Do we need to add that to?
I like that.
Hey, thanks, Jen. So I don't know if you can see that, Lou, on the screen?
Oh.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah.
City of Fort Collins, so it doesn't even give the website because there's an assumption that. People know how to look up the city of Fort Collins. I mean, seriously, that's what's there.
But I would be inclined to just put the a QR code that somebody could. Could scan that just takes you to the. The action on your website and you'll list the ones under review.
I think that's a great idea. Something as simple as this with just a QR code that someone comes up and snaps and takes you right there.
Yeah, it makes it nice and simple.
I think the city of Fort Collins could learn something from you guys.
So. The finishing that process, so the sign goes up, the the link, what hours, but. But it's there, goes, brings them to the application, down the review page, and then what are we expecting at the five?
You'll, they'll find out, is it, we're gonna put a gas station there or is my neighbor, you know, wanted to. Something would, is it something that's gonna get me excited as a neighbor or is it something that's pretty not.
Alright, I mean, is it just, just, just a. Anything. On chart description or are we talking now, we're gonna use the application and you can prove it or what?
If it's more than the most basic thing, somebody's got to come to the planning department.
On the website now under, if I recall, last time I looked. I I think you've got the application there and whatever has been submitted as part of that application.
So um, we, I'm looking at this right now and we need to desperately update it. CJ, take a note. Yeah, so applications in review, it says below our links to land use and development applications that our department has received. This does not include all pending applications. If you can't find the information you're looking for, please call our office. But meanwhile, then it gives, uh, this is an old one, Pike's Peak Taco, conditional use permit and site plan, the case number. And then it's literally the same stuff that shows up on your agenda. And that gets run in the newspaper. A request by Pike's Peak Taco, the applicant. And Morales Enterprises LLC property owner for a conditional use permit with a site plan review to accommodate a drive-through Mexican restaurant. And associated site improvements along with a common lot, three-quarter driveway off Highway twenty-four. With a legal description of Lot Three, Brooklyn Heights, and then there's the address in the community commercial zone. Um, and then it lists the planning commission hearing date and then the city council hearing date. And then there's a link that says view progress information. Um, so then you click that and it goes to like the staff report, um, the application. Whatever's available. Now, the other twist, just so you all know what we're juggling, because I want to share. The nowadays with websites, there's, I think it's specific to Colorado, but legislation out there around making sure. That this is navigable and user-friendly, so there's. Software programs and analyses that are done to review the website to determine. Um, what the accessibility is. The planning department fails consistently. Because of the legal requirements of how we need to word and post things. So the state law has set us up to fail. Um, and that's why going forward, you're probably going to see considerably more links to subsequent attached documents. And not the website proper. So the website proper gets the appropriate accessibility ratings. Don't you laugh how the world changes? But that is definitely something we're conscious of at the city level, because people need to be able to find information. And so how do we word this? How do you get that out there? How, you know, how do you navigate this? Um, and I I think, I think the standard is eighth grade reading level. I I gotta double check with our our communications gal, but it's it's. You know, a pretty, pretty basic kind of, kind of level.
Fifth graders write three parts.
What's that?
Hire eighth graders to write three parts now. But not, not exceptionally great, average age.
So I guess my, my question still remains is to Larry's point, do we need to add language in here saying the city will provide signage? Once a completed application is submitted.
I think I want to flush this out a little bit more. I want to take a look at what Fort Collins is doing, because is there a way to consolidate this? I I really want to look at how Fort Collins has all of their their notice on an application. And that's where I am right now. I just, I just want to get you some more information.
There's something city could just do. Doesn't, you know, doesn't need to be in the code.
If it wasn't in the code, it could still, it could still be done.
Well, the part of my objective is I don't want to spend time here trying to invent a wheel. I want to look at Fort Collins wheel to see if this is applicable. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it's fair to let Karen, Karen take her time to think about it and propose something to come back to. Cause I I hadn't really thought about it, but it does, it sounds like there's an idea here to provide a valuable service to the citizens.
Yeah, I I think there's an opportunity.
Yeah, I, I think there's an opportunity for big improvement.
The part of adjustment has our rules of procedure. He, does the planning commission have a lower tier document that you can control that has more detail? Like our rules of procedure or like bylaws and I
Not, not that it's gonna provide get, direction to the planning director on, keep on giving notice beyond what's in that.
Yeah, the, the rules of procedure or the bylaws really are about how the, the board interacts and conducts business. The legal metrics around providing notice for hearings comes out of code.
Well, you still have the, the legal, I guess where I'm going is what, what Larry was bringing up and the question that you had was, do I need to put something in here? My suggestion to you guys. It, it would be no, put the details, if you wanna do something like an early notice. Make that a, an administrative thing that you're gonna have in your rules of procedure. Put it in there, don't put it up here.
But our, our rules of procedure just don't go there.
They don't.
Guidance or even recommendations to planning director.
Yeah, the, the, the rules of procedure don't provide direction to staff, they're not supposed to.
That, that's what I'm saying, is, is if you feel in your department, in, in the commission. That you can do your service, provide your service by doing this, by providing that earlier notice. Keep it at that level. Rather than make a requirement here, you're meeting the high level requirement of having to post notices for a hearing, this is going above and beyond that. Great practice, I think we should do it. But I, I wouldn't wanna have it legislated that you have to do it in the code.
Lou, I disagree, I think we're reviewing the application review and referral section of how applications are reviewed. And this is just one step in the process, this is early notification. I, I like the idea of not doing a letter.
Check on Fort Collins.
Okay, and then, and then again, I like the idea of having posted this, the site posted and not a letter provided. I, it's certainly good to have this on pending applications, but when I look at the pending application section of our, our site, usually old applications that have gone through the process already. They're not, it's not kee, kept up. And it also helps the staff understand a little bit about what the, the neighborhood or the adjacent property owners' concerns are. In process, and they say, oh, I never thought that increased traffic would be an issue. But you know, he, he, he could let those things come up, and then as a staff, you, you could start developing methods to mitigate those issues or to address those issues, to take care of it in the process. And as you're still talking to the applicant.
See, I, I'd almost, if you had something in the code that asked for that. If, if I were wearing Karen's hat. I would say it's on the website. And that would meet that requirement, it's a crappy way to do it, because who knows to go to the website. But I wouldn't require anything beyond that. If she figures out what the easy button is, so she has her shaft and is inundated.
There is something you could do beyond that, if you simply say have a generic sign that within ten, within ten days of the applicant receiving notice of completeness. Hang a generic sign on the property.
Like the Fort Collins.
So, yeah, which circles back to what our chair tried to say about seven minutes ago. That, um, yeah, we will check Fort Collins, um, actual code to see how it spells out, how they do their notice. And, um, kind of flush that out a little bit for you, for you guys, um, since
Yes, let's See what we can do, I think an earlier notice is encouraged, let's see what we can do to put that together and you know, it's eight thirty already and if we can move on a little bit, that would be great.
And I, I would say that keep in mind that everybody does not have access to a computer.
I mean, yes and no, you can go to the library, I mean, it's, there's
You know, there's still those people that don't use a computer.
Well, that's, that's
Yeah. Okay. Moving on, Jen.
Alright, I was just coming through the city of Fort Collins code while we were talking about that and I I found their noticing section, but Karen, you and I have to look into that a little bit further.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, nineteen. And I took some notes on that, by the way, saying that you guys seem to be generally, um, liking this idea, but that Karen and I need to flush it out a little bit more, so. Um, comment nineteen, where are we? Application review and referral. Add applicable commissions and boards. So that would be as part of the initial review, the planning director shall refer the development application to the appropriate referral review agencies. And specify a timeframe, so Larry, you're saying and applicable commissions and boards. Karen, is that appropriate here? Do you refer things to planning commission at this stage? Or is it just going out to other referral agencies to help you understand your review, like engineering and folks like that?
Yeah, it goes to, to city departments like engineering, public or utilities. Um, depending upon what's going on, the application, we go to the library, the fire district, um, the utility providers. So referral agencies is planner lingo for just folks that we, um, think may have interest concern or, um, constructive comment, feedback around a pending, or should know that the applications pending that may impact your service area. Um, tho, those kind of things. If something's going to the historic preservation committee, that's typically a different um, review that happens earlier and that's also what we're understanding, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is looking for, so I don't we don't have that flushed out yet in terms of how that, we haven't gotten to that section yet is the bottom line, um, to, to get that code language, especially around Parks and Rec extracted out, um, but in, in, and what does that look like? So, I don't know if that helps or not. So some of it's not baked yet, some of it happens at a different point. Around committees.
Maybe I shouldn't have ever said various commissions and boards, but it should be the staff person involved. For instance, you're the staff person for historical preservation.
Yeah.
So, and if you felt, at that time, you saw something that was significant to that board, or I guess it's called a committee. You know, then you, then you would put that on their agenda or something, let's, let's talk about this in the project. We heard this several months ago when we were reviewing a, a project up in Collins neighborhood. Uh, dealing with the expansion of one of the paradise. And they wanted to take an old track and convert that track to designated for open space in the lot, single lot. And we heard from Don, from, from the Parks and Rec Board. Well, I wish we had known about that earlier, because we could have helped craft that. That, that's where I was coming from, not, not necessarily, it has to be the, the, the board, the committee, the commission with the staff person and let that person decide whether or not he or she wants further input.
Is this, is this the direction to send to the electric company and gas company for their comments as well?
Yes.
So it doesn't do that, refers to public review agencies, the gas, what is the gas company agency?
That is how, this is like I said, planner terminology, that when, in the land of planners, when you say referral agencies. It's an all encompassing umbrella term that, that includes utility providers. I swear, Lee. Larry's not arguing with me, so I'm not.
Maybe this means any, any person, organization or group of people has input that you need to know, then agent, review agencies is fine.
And we might have, I, I'd have to go back and look, but you know, the, the state has this draft model code out there. The Jen and I are both privy to, since we served on review committees around that. And, um, some of the best, um, planner minds in the state were behind putting that together. Um, Clarion Associates, I think, was one of the leads on that with Don Elliott. Um, so this, I'd have to look, but this may be language we pulled directly out of that model. So for whatever, that's meant to give you guys reassurance that this really is like standard kind of stuff.
Well, once again, I wanted to plant that seed, I think I planted the seed. And I heard Karen and Jen say, let's take a look at that, so we'll see what they come up.
Yeah, and, uh, just listening to this, one of the ways we could address this is just define what the refu, referral review agencies are and the definitions.
Yeah, if it's not necessary and it's, you know, it's redefining what all planners know, then maybe it's easier to leave it.
Well, I think, I think if, if something that all planners know, but the general community doesn't it probably ought to get moved into a definition, what does that mean? Stuff like this.
Agencies to definitions.
That's down the road from first, first step is find out what the what the other folks have put in their, their codes to address it.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright. Um, I don't wanna be a dead horse on that one, but we, we have written language, a lot of codes just say it goes out to the referral agencies and there's an internal document that Karen would have about which applications need to go to which, you know, which review bodies. We have in some codes actually written a whole section on this, you know, kind of a definition of what a referral agency is in an application procedure section, but um, it's nothing that couldn't be handled just in a definition section either, so. I think it was a good discussion on that. Um, let's see, item twenty, add new subsection. That the staff report shall include the planning director's recommendations to the city planning commission and city council regarding the application. Um, and whether it should be approved or denied or subject to conditions.
It, it's already in the staff report right now, the recommendation, but it just kinda formalized that it is very important for the city council to get the staff's recommendation.
I see what you're saying, so just maybe even update this item E, that the staff report shall include whether upon determination by the planning director, the development application complies with all applicable standards of the UDC. And their recommendation for approval, approval with conditions or denial.
That works.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, perfect, we can do that. We're getting there with a few more comments. So twenty-one, was there anything on this page? Nobody had any comments. This is just talking about withdrawal of application, abandoned applications. And then we get into the table.
Hold on, page, page ten. Uh, towards the bottom of page ten, F two. I, I was puzzled by this. The applicant may submit a request to the planning director for, this, previously said you have a hundred and eighty days to, to act on it or matter becomes, is killed, so. Applicant may submit a request to planning director and writing for an additional ninety days to address staff known deficiencies. If the applicant submits a newer revised application concerning the same property, a new application may be required, a new application fee must be paid. What is it? The planning director can give you ninety days or not give you ninety days. For reasons to drown clear, I guess, make a decision, but if, but they, if they give you ninety days and you submit a newer revised applicant, which must be a revised application, if you're responding to the comments that are made, must be revising your application. Then a new application fee must be, I mean, at least the thoughts just don't match up. What, what are we, what are we trying to do?
You know, I understand what you're saying, basically. The first one is if nothing happens in a hundred and eighty days, it's considered abandoned. However, on day one hundred and seventy-nine and a half, the applicant comes back and says, I need more time. So then they potentially have the ability to get ninety more days. But it is not word of the greatest, I agree with you, because the next thought is when they bring something back in, you know, if they're bringing you something different and it's not a correction of the prior one. This is when it's considered a new application. So that's what that second sentence is, and I agree, it's disjointed and doesn't go with the first sentence on part two.
If the first sentence went at the end of part one, item one. The application be banned, but, but you could get ninety days more in a second, and if it's been abandoned and you come back and then submit. It starts, you start all over again.
Yep.
Every six o'clock.
Well, that might actually be a point number three under there in terms of that second sentence about a new
As long as you weren't just so, but as it was now, they didn't Kind of destroying it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what's going on.
Cool, that makes sense, we can adjust that.
Make a number three.
Alright, and, and we might even, let's see that. Yeah, I think that actually reads okay, okay, I like that. Um, okay, now are we ready for the table? We only had a couple of comments in the table.
And this is a notice table, um, where it summarizes the time periods for the different types of notice. As opposed to the other table we've been talking about that is yet to be revealed, because it's a third development. Which is listing the various application types and who the review bodies versus the decision makers are. So this one, and, and then where you would go for application materials. So this one is specific to providing notice of a pending application for public hearings. Or, uh, so, there's a couple of things in here that are subject to an administrative decision, uh, but it is from our current code, notice requirements. Um, in the last application, you saw ones with strikeouts where we were making recommendations on uh, leveling the, the time period, so it's just more consistently ten days, since that's effectively what we're doing. So there were some in here that were sevens that we, we made longer to, to ten. Um, as opposed to shortening anything, so that's, that's what this is, so on to the comments.
From our board of adjustment standpoint. The board was adamant, based on the inputs that we had, a little bit of research that we did. That, that ten days is willfully inadequate when you're sending things out and expecting to get inputs by mail. We met with the planning departments, the planning director at the time, Sally. And she felt that twenty-one days was a doable amount, we felt that twenty-one days would be a whole lot better than ten. But I would, we felt that as far as the board of adjustment was concerned, we felt this should apply across the board, not just to hearings that the board of adjustment had. So we agreed that it's, it ought to be uniform unless there's a real strong reason to have different boards at times. But what we have here is ten days, is, is silly. When you think that mail gets posted here goes to the Springs, goes to Denver, goes to somebody's place. The owner may not even have, may not, may not even be a resident, the property owner here. So it's, it's gotta get transferred to goodness knows where, I just ran a couple of cases two years ago. Where I sent some stuff to me. And it took four, five days to get to me or to someone in Divide. For example, they gave them no time to review anything, send a feedback. And you miss the ten day notice, so ten days is, is you might as well forget asking for public input. If you're gonna use the mail systems. So that's why, and, and again, Sally felt twenty-one days was something that wouldn't be too much of an additional So that's why, and again, Sally felt twenty-one days was something that wouldn't be too much of an additional burden. I would suggest that Karen think about it with her staffing and see what, what they might be able to do.
Yeah, just before we go on, I know we did Curtis last time, re-adjourn me and maybe others, ten days is counted. It's ten days, ten calendar days.
Yes, there's a note.
It's, I think it's in our definitions. We, we hashed that one out.
Definition of days or calendar days unless they're expressly called out as workdays is according to our definition. But there's another question. Right? When you're counting days. You got, let's say you have days one through eleven. You start on day one, you put this, put the, nail the, pound the sign in the ground. When have you, when are you prior to ten days? Clearly, you don't, you don't, you don't count day one. Is it on day eleven? You've got your tenth, so you count the last day, but not the first day. And if that's the case, you don't want to say calendar, oh, all listed as calendar days prior to public hearing. Because then you'd probably want to say twelve, eleventh day is just, just that day. It's not prior days, it's equal days. So. There's probably a wording issue there, too.
Okay, so dispel this out. If I'm on, if the hearing is on the tenth of the month. And something, and this is just for example purposes only, if the hearing's on the tenth of the month. And I need to give at least five days notice prior to the hearing date. I start on the tenth and then I go nine, eight, seven, six, five. So I need to have hearing posted before the fifth.
So it's a fourth, so you don't count either the first day.
So in planner math, that's the minimum. So if this is ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five. We're shooting to have it posted like the third or the fourth at a minimum, so that we hit that minimum in advance.
Okay, actually, that is counting one of the days. Put it on four. If you don't count four, you go five, six, seven, eight, nine. And then on the, then you see not counting that. So the tenth, so you don't count either the first day or the last day.
Those are, those are all full days. So, so it's five full, you have to.
You have to complete your days before the day of the hearing.
Correct.
Figure out how to word it too, but it does, calendar days prior to public hearing doesn't make it clear.
So one important thing, Jen, that we are missing in this section related to the mailed notices. And you guys may not like this, but at least in theory, when we float, and I floated out here. But it's actually a very important provision. And I've got language somewhere else, so this is going to be a bad paraphrase. But the bottom line is failure for somebody to have received mail notice does not negate. Notice having been properly happening prior to the hearing date. Because every once in a while, you've got a situation where somebody says here, well, I didn't get my mail notice. But yet in the planning department, we have record that this is the list of where this was all mailed. And yet they're also here in the room telling you, I didn't get noticed. So somehow they had noticed because they managed to be here. So that's actually an important code provision that we need to have in there.
Yeah, it, it got lost. I thought there was something, something existing.
And we, we, we might somewhere, but yeah.
Can I ask on the, it's, it's answered on publication. A notice will be published by the planning department. Signposting an adjacent property owner's written, written notice shall be sent by mail, or a sign shall be posted on the property. By whom? If it's by, if it's by the city, it's a little easier. If, if it's just a little by the city, they try hard, it should be good enough. If it's by, if there's something that the developer or applicant is trying to do. It's, you're a little more like saying, you, you better make sure it actually happens.
So this is part of the, I did the math, the forty-nine different sections of our code that currently cover process. That, I don't know where it's written. I'd have to do a lot of digging to find it. But I can tell you in practice what happens. Our team internally, we prepare the, the notice that gets sent in the mail. And our team actually prints, stuffs envelopes, takes them to the post office. So we take care of that, but I believe the postage is billed to the applicant. The publication that happens in the newspaper, our team takes care of that. The sign that gets posted on the property, we create the sign. And then we hand it to the developer that says, this is what you need to post. There's X number of them. Here's your map. You post them in these locations. Bring us back this affidavit that says you've got this done. So that's the mechanics of how that happens now. And we charge them for the sign.
All right, well, first thing needs to be done is the by whom needs to be answered in both E and F, written notice shall be sent. That sign shall be posted by.
Well, and that may all change depending upon where we go with the other thing, but I appreciate that. I'm making notes by whom.
Like, where's your backup to church?
Yes, let me finish this note really quick.
But great points. Thank you.
Did I miss some of the previous discussion? What do the asterisks mean? Yeah, that was my question of right away on ten and temporary use permit, double, a double asterisk. And there's no explanation of them.
Yeah, we need to put those in as footnotes. And Karen, I can't remember why we had those in there.
Where are they?
There's one right here under vacation of right of way ten, and that might have been a note for us internally.
I think that has to do with us checking timelines because I believe that. In that other code section, twelve point oh eight point oh eight oh, might actually specify seven days. As a minimum. Where's the other one, Lee?
Oh, yeah. You know, that's kind of sounds like that was something we talked about. Last time.
I figured I forgot. I don't know.
Well, now that you said that, I, I, that sounds familiar.
I think the temporary use permit, that's something we do as a courtesy, that it's not a current code requirement. That's what that is.
Do you find that in our twenty-three, twenty-six, or his process, is that this posting, the notification requirements. Differ from one application to the next?
I want to say yes, because. The prior, no, the prior director and team, and I don't know when they would have created it. Somebody else to, to, to save themselves a lot of brain damage, actually went through and put together. This other spreadsheet that lists certain application types and notice. And the, the date requirements around that, and then reference, references some of the code sections. To save yourself the, the conversation of, well, how do we do that one again? Where do I look? So to outwit the current regulations, prior staff. Made themselves crib notes is what it amounts to. And we refer to those crib notes. At least weekly, if not more frequently.
Well, the reason I ask the question is because I think it's very important to be consistent. Unless there's a outstanding reason why it shouldn't be ten days or fourteen days, or whatever the magic number is.
Well, some of these I can see where they might have put a shorter notice in there because they were trying to. Be responsive and help things move quickly. So things like a flood hazard development permit. I mentioned previously, I still find it fascinating that that requires. Planning commission decision that it's not something that's handled administratively at a staff level. So that might have been part of the compromise. Oh, well, that only needs seven days notice. To, to move it along more quickly for the, the developer.
Yeah.
Homeowner typically.
Maybe there ought to be a distinction between an application and a permit. You know, to simplify it, maybe.
But it's still subject to review or hearing or notice associated with that.
I got a question for Lou. In, in lieu, in lieu of. Our previous discussion about early notification. Do you think your opinion would change if we had that provision saying, there's an application before us? So somebody's alert, alert to it.
Too short a period of time. If one of our primary, if the code says you'll be notified by mail. And posting in the newspapers. No, ten days is not. Even with an earlier notice, I think the idea of the early notice makes me more comfortable with the idea of the twenty-one days. And the way when Sally was thinking about it, she felt twenty-one was a reasonable number. Was thinking about how early they have to, you know, her thing was, hey, I can't send out a notice until this is finalized. And that's true. You're working with, you have to, to pin it down, but you've got to have notification to the courier. And there, they require notifications to be in the paper ten days before a hearing. At least in the case of the DOA. It meant really they needed to get it almost two weeks ahead of time as an envelope.
We have to send it to them. The, if you're publishing it on a Wednesday, you got to send it to them. The Tuesday of the week prior, so that's what, eight or nine days or something? So it's a long lead time to get something in the paper.
Your publication date has to be ten days prior to the hearing. So now you're, you're in your, your twenty-one days, but that was Sally's thinking at the time.
So not arguing against, but just flipping that same coin over. Where I worked in the Department of Defense, someone did with a, a thought experiment, what they called the NOL program. I had a program to build nothing. How long would it take to go through all the required steps to do nothing? And it was on the order of a year. To go through all the required processes, all the, all the review times, all of.
What were the attributes of the nothing?
Nothing.
And you work for the fence?
Well, I, I, I did do, but my point being. If we add up all the steps in the process. How, you know, how, from the time someone drops off an application to the time they, they walk out with the. Full approval and they can break, start breaking ground tomorrow. I mean, how, we need to think about how long that, we, we've made that process and make sure that it's not. You know. Excessive.
Yeah, well, we did, we looked at and. Juggle, because we've got. But we've got so many days from when an application was put in until the hearing has to be. Conducted and an action has to be made, either approval or disapproval on a variance. And the code specified what that, that time was. We'll have to adjust that. Based on what the notification kind of is here, probably may need to extend that. So, yeah, it, it, accordions, if you will. But I think if we're serious about wanting to get adequate time for a homeowner, a property owner. To reply. And one of our primary methods of notification is. The US book office. We've got to recognize that the unit table age is not a realistic time. So, yeah, we've got to go back and look at that. Let's see what, what we think is realistic. That we might be able to achieve. And with the lead time, then just getting it posted in the paper requires. You know, if we had a daily paper that we work with, that would be different than a weekly paper. With a weekly paper, kind of. Tells us what we already have to do, and that's where Sally came up with the twenty-one days.
The courier comes out on Wednesday. We meet on Thursday. So there's, it's really.
They meet on Monday.
Different boards.
But still, I mean, it's, you know.
So, so there's some, some additional slack time that's not even really captured in this. Then you mentioned the courier once, eight days prior. And so this, our ten days really. From. When it, when. They have to deliver that to the courier to when we actually hold the hearing, it's probably already closer to twenty-one days. Now. The citizen doesn't benefit from hardly any of that. But, so I get that. It's already a long, long slow process. You can, you can exceed those time.
These are minimums. Yeah.
And keep in mind too, that we're reviewing the application review process right now. If you look at the code as proposed, I don't see anything telling me that within. Twenty-one days of submitting of an application for a conditional use permit, you've got to have a hearing.
You gotta have what? Within twenty days? What was that?
You need to have a hearing within twenty-one days after an application. Those type of languages of the existing code. Do not exist in the proposed code.
Yeah, the whole point is to say, we're giving you notice of an upcoming hearing. And we're giving, as a minimum, you need to have at least this many days advanced notice of when the hearing is going to occur. That's what notice language is all about. Is it provides this, this minimum standard that you've got this time period that says, hey, we're going to do this. It can be longer, often it is. It's why, part of the reason it's not precise, that notice has to happen exactly fourteen days prior to whatever. It's, it's the, the minimum standard.
Following up on Lou's point. They want to have comparable times across all of them. We want to be similar for all the types of actions. You could have one column, what we do. A property letter, a, a letter that had fifteen days notice. Is, costs less time to the developer's timetable than the publication does. So in fact, it's comparable, it means the same for each type. If you had ten days for publication, ten days for signposting, fifteen days per letter. Those all come out getting to you about the same time. So I mean, it might, might make sense just to have fifteen days on, on the letter, because it doesn't cost anything. But it does mean the guy will know enough to, he's got a better chance of getting, of actually hearing about it within ten days.
I'm doing this from memory, but I'm pretty darn sure that in the Colorado state law, when it talks about public notice. It definitely talks about that legal publication and content. It may talk about signposting, but the property owner notification letters. That's something you see at local land use codes. So that's. More of that kind of courtesy. We're spelling that out in our code because it's important to us. But it doesn't carry that same weight around, around notice that you see in state law. And so Lou had a, a point he's been trying to make.
Which is probably the reason why the practice is not, not to invalidate a hearing because someone comes in and says, I only got the letters. Nine days ago. Because the sign was up in the publication and those are know, knowable things. Whereas the, the, when the letter, letter is, no one knows what.
So Lou, you were going to say something, or but trying to.
And again. Say a lot of this advertising and perception. We've had a lot of people in our board meetings, and I'm sure you guys have too, complain that we didn't give one out notice. What, in our discussions with the previous planning department. We looked at what it takes to get the notice in the newspaper. And, and it came out to be about that twenty-one day.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just, I just mapped it out.
So if you've got to do that already. Granted, this reflects a minimum amount of time. But we've had the public complain to us. If we already know, we have to get something to the newspapers twenty days ahead. Let's put the twenty days in here across the board, anything that needs a newspaper notification. Put the twenty days in there when the public complains that we are not giving them enough time. You turn around and say, we doubled what we had already.
Yeah, no. No, I, I'm with you, Lou. It's kind of a no-brainer because there's no additional work. Maybe it's work a little earlier. But it's, um, because if the courier comes out on Wednesday. Your tenth day. Ends on a Saturday, so pushes to a Monday. So already missed the, the Board of Adjustments, but you could still make the Planning Commission meeting that week. But you had to get it to the courier the Thursday prior.
The Tuesday prior.
Tuesday prior, so you're already at twenty-three days.
But then, no, no, this, this number here is. This is when it appears in the paper.
No, 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 I get that, I get that.
Okay.
So if you meet the public, the publication of the paper. And if you went to the post office the same day and, and, and dropped that off right after you stopped off at the courier. You would, you would have twenty-three days for, um, for mailing. So it costs, there's no additional cost to increasing that to say wanting twenty-one.
Karen had a real good point that, that. I overlooked. That this doesn't say. When it is mailed, this says when it has to appear.
I think it's postage day, isn't it?
So we, you do your mailing at twenty-one days.
Right.
That would, and since we're not separating that up, well, talks publication, signposting. Adjacent property owner letter, so that could be twenty-one.
But no, it would not stretch the process.
And it wouldn't stretch the process. And, and you can brag that we responded to public demand.
And not just, and mean it.
Yeah.
Do you have concerns with that, Karen? Just updating the mail.
It's late, I'm tired. I'm back on, we're largely trying to work with existing content. Um, this chapter's a little different in terms of some of the language that we've looked at a little bit ago being brand new. Um, but trying to, to cast some transparency into how, how the planning office does their work on behalf of the, the community. And what the developer can expect. Um, but, but these numbers here in the table. Were brought forward out of the existing code, the existing language.
They weren't all brought forward, some were changed, weren't they?
They were lengthened a little bit for consistency, cause otherwise they were like seven days.
So the, the argument here is it for consistency, mail, mail day consistency with the publication date. Ten days of publication date is more like twenty days. I mean, twenty days of mail, or twenty days for mailing, and if, if you're gonna be. Going to the courier office and one good post office, you can just as easily have the guy pound the sign in around the same time.
Okay, so let me. Give you insight, the other cheat sheet the planning department uses to actually get the sausage made for everybody. Is, well, no, this is important because, you know, we're, I've never spent so much time talking about notice before in my life. Um, so I hit the wrong, I hit my touchpad, so I lost my screen, I'm sorry. But, um, the September twelfth Planning Commission meeting, okay? September twelve Planning Commission's meeting. Their application due date for having a complete application in our offices was August sixth. The agenda notice needs to get sent to the paper by August twentieth in order to be published on August twenty-eighth. We also send out the property owner letters. And the sign, they actually have two slightly different dates, but those actually go like in the mail. Or the sign needs to be on the property by the twenty-eighth. Uh, the, the letters are by the twenty-eighth of the month, uh, the sign is by the thirtieth of the month. All for the September twelfth. Planning Commission meeting.
So when was, in order to get the, the notice in the paper?
August twentieth.
When, when did one have to call the courier?
August twentieth.
So the letters were mailed.
The twenty-eighth, a week later.
Letters were mailed. A week, you know, more than a week after the courier is notified, so that was time. Not available to the public, but just because. Scheduled.
Well, I mean, that, that schedule represents the, the la, the last day you can get that done and still make the, make, make so this. But, but to your point, it, it could be done earlier.
A lot of times it does happen the same week the notice goes to the paper. But the letters get sent out, a lot of times it does.
So it's a natural once you had a process in place where, okay, we're gonna do the package, the notification package, sign, letters, courier. And do that all on one work, one chunk of work.
So the bottom line is, what do we want for notice? If it's twenty-one days, that's fine. You said, I'm really tired and cranky, it's been a really long week, a really long week. If you want twenty-one, just tell me and we'll plug it in the damn table. Please, just tell me.
I would argue for twenty.
I would argue for twenty for the mail, for the mail.
Twenty, not twenty-one, do I hear twenty-three?
Well, we can, it's, it's an easy double.
We don't want to change the mail timeframe because. Public, excuse me, you're right, mail, I see the newspaper, so mail can increase that to twenty days.
Yeah, 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 the, the long pole is the publication.
So let's use after the base.
Yeah.
Same.
Well, the long pole, the long pole is publication, but in order to keep with, with twenty to ten days. You've gotta get a notification over, the notification to courier out twenty-one or twenty.
Whatever my little paper says.
So, so please the publication, it can.
Well, I'm saying is, is let's change the letter date. And make it the same as when you're gonna notify the courier. And take credit with our, our audience, it's the public.
Yes. And if we move from ten to twenty, we know we can argue that we haven't caused developer any time at all.
Correct, yeah, so win-win. And the sign.
The signage is the same thing as the letters.
Publication stays at ten, signposting goes to twenty, adjacent property owner notification goes to twenty. Is what we're talking about. We got agreement on that.
What time, what, what was that? I wasn't writing that down.
In twenty twenty.
Publications ten. Uh, signposting twenty. Adjacent property owner letter twenty. I do have one question, condominium for the adjacent property owner, says zero, is that a typo or is there? Should that be NA?
I can get that typo. Let me open up another document and double check that.
And it's also on the same condominium line, uh, the publication doesn't have any indication. So let's do the NA or ten, I'm guessing.
That one actually is an NA under our current regs.
Okay.
So just in that case, we are actually increasing the timeline to develop.
I'm sorry, what are you talking about, Don?
If there's no publication requirement, then go from ten to twenty actually is an increase in the total timeline to developer for those limited.
It's not applicable, isn't it?
Publication for a condominium and townhouse plot is not required under the current regs.
I understand, but what I'm, what I'm trying to say.
Signposting should be, remain as ten instead of twenty.
If we, if we want the timeline to the developer to remain as it is today. We, see, we got ten days free on the other ones because, because of the inefficiencies of the publication process. So, yeah, I agree, I. In this case, increasing that to twenty is actually adding ten days to the developer's timeline.
Actually, we're adding five because your current code has a fifteen-day signposting. And a seven-day adjacent property owner letter for condominiums.
Really?
This, this was one of those that was a little bit different. Here, I'll show you the red lines, you guys can.
Yeah, no, and it, I, it, it is worded very differently because. Condominium and townhouse plots are done administratively and it's, it's very bad language in terms of how it's worded. Um. Cause it has to do with sending letters. Within X, I think it's within X number of days of receipt of the application. And then there's this time period for when Scott makes a decision, it's, it's, it's. Like a three-quarter turn off of how everything else in the code functions, which is.
And I, I'm not arguing against it, I just wanted to point out the fact that that is a, a net change.
Happy to have Karen and Jen review it, put in what makes sense based on what was historical.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Either do it consistent or preserve, whatever, whatever, whatever seems logical.
Why, why we have a notification, we have no public comment.
Exactly.
Why we even do that?
Exactly. Review, whoever's reviewing and has that.
You have ten to fifteen days to get upset about it, dude.
For nothing.
Alright, so, yeah, we're all getting a little punchy.
It's no circuit, um. Yeah, and then what's next? I'm thinking that we're running the staff all the way to the edge tonight. Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry.
Stop my worry, I don't know. That much.
Is the next one that bad that you really don't want to submit?
I tried to delete number twenty-two, but I couldn't, so we can skip that one.
Okay, good, cause I was gonna say no, it probably shouldn't be there, so we're good.
Yeah.
Maybe I should have lost it early in the, in the evening if that means we delete comments.
That, that's what I was looking at and go, wait a minute, there's supposed to be another table here and that's why, okay, got it, and I tried to delete it.
No worries. Life.
Let's see here, we can even. Just show it like that. Okay. So Larry, you're saying you don't want to unhinge Karen with these last two comments?
Karen would actually like to get this, I mean, we're close.
I've sat in that chair too long, and I understand exactly what she's going through.
Well, the last two are fairly similar and it just, um, speaks to the amount of information. So in the publication, we say the street address and legal description of the subject property. I think we were, um. Say the same thing in a, in another spot, yeah. Down at adjacent property owner letter, legal description. Adjacent property owner letter, that one's not too hard because you can have it in the, you know, on the backside of the letter or whatnot, but. Um. I do agree in publications, but, but that one may need some legal attention. Because Karen, I'm not sure, I can't remember if we have to have the legal description in that publication. Or at least a shortened description.
Yeah, no, um, my experience has been, um, and, and we do it a little different here with the park that we essentially use the notice of the. The meeting as the, the note, the, the legal notification. Um, so it's very, very common in that legal notification in the paper to include the full legal description of the property. Um, we kind of shorten it here a little bit, so at least references township range section. If it's already platted, it's a lot easier to, to give lot block, you know, name a subdivision. Uh, it's on signs, other places that included, um. The, the legal description, I, brush specifically where we were able to reference like closest cross street.
Yeah.
Um, there's other ways to get to like approximate location. Uh, but, but it, it is that notice in the paper that's really supposed to have the legal description. So.
And that, that's where I was getting that, when I, I read the notices. And I. Started getting into a, the legal description of a property. It, it could go on several pages sometimes.
If it's a means.
You know, is, tell people where it's at. You know, is that fifty feet west of the intersection, whatever. As far as those is for wording. As far as the ordinance, I agree.
But that, that may sound easier, but it's much easier to cut and paste legal description than, than to generate a. An approximate description.
It depends.
Well, it's, doesn't matter, if there's a real, if there's a, if there's a, a street address, it doesn't really matter much.
That's always helpful, but if it's undeveloped property.
When there's not, you, you'd like to have something that says, you know. A half mile west such as a intersection or whatever, something.
But, but I mean, it's supposed to be like a flag lot where, I, I didn't realize it went back a half mile, you know, until I read the description, so. It might wrap all its ground back behind your property and you didn't even know it.
So again, all I was trying to say is, let's just make it simple for people to understand where the property is located. Wouldn't give them those, but if we have a legal notice in the paper that needs to be published. Then it needs to be a full legal description.
Yeah.
And again, the whole thing with the, you know, the range and township and section number. If that's everything, a lot of people have no idea what that is.
And so what gets mailed out, um, does include a map. Where the, the, the subject property is.
That, that's, that's good to know.
Yeah, that could, I, I think that might even be listed there, but, um, yeah, there's, there's a map that goes with that.
Yeah, I found the mail notices to be very easy to interpret.
Are we at the end, Jen?
I was muted, we are, you guys missed that celebratory explanation.
All comments on the code review, this point from.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a mulligan. A bit of a mulligan. Two and a half years ago, the Board of Adjustment made a pretty good detail, had a lot of the kind of discussion you guys are having. Here about. The section that, sections of the code that applied to the BOA. We made a number of specific word wording changes. We put clarification notices in like calendar days versus working days and things like that. What they did here for the BOA section. Was basically take what was in the code. And bring it here, they haven't had a chance to review what we suggested. Uh, I've asked Karen, Karen said they were gonna take a look at what we had. And I think the mulligan I'm asking for, or saying is that. With the comments that we get back from Logan and from Karen and from Legal. Uh, again, giving them another chance to that, I'm gonna suggest. To our chairman Nick, that, that. We have another BOA working session. And then come back to you guys if there's anything that they've suggested. That we disagree with or wanna raise to your, your approval. We were planning initially. On coming forward two and a half years ago, we had a change to the code or. Clarify our BOA stuff, so we may wanna come back and talk with you guys. One more time before you pot the BOA section to this. That's all I'm saying. I don't think it'll add any. Any like this length of time. Appreciate what you're trying to do because we agree, we need to have consistency or if we don't. Have a targeted reason why we don't have consistency. Anyone else have comments? Karen?
Your next.
Staff reports.
Uh, your next meeting does include a current development item, it's an extension. Of a conditional use permit and site plan and then, um, our goal is to then do work session materials. Uh, ideally related to the mythical table that you guys are all eager to see. So that's where we are on that. Thank you for your time and my sincere apologies for being a little short-tempered. Really feel bad for that.
Well, and let's get out of here, it's nine nineteen, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.